Phones aren't vibrating.
Okay, good evening. Good evening, Tuckahoe. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Village of Tuckahoe for Wednesday, October the 9th. Let's start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy, please take the roll.
Member Fiori.
Present.
Member Scalzo.
Present.
Member Palladino.
Present.
Member Jack.
Present.
I am present. The agenda this evening is five items, approval of the minutes for the last meeting. We have 29 Alma Villa area variance new deck, which is a return. We have 38 Fairview Avenue, convert a three-family back to a two-family. And we have 21 Columbus Avenue special use permit for a new daycare center. And 46 Lincoln Avenue area variance for an addition. We will start with the approval of the minutes. Everybody that was in attendance, take a look at the minutes. Anybody have any changes? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the September the 11th, 2019 meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Obstained.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiori.
In favor.
Member Scalzo.
Obstained.
Member Palladino.
Approve.
Member Jackman.
Approve.
Chairman Revo.
Approved. Very good. 29 Alma Villa Avenue. Is the applicant present? If so, step up, please. State your name for the record.
My name is Valen Niki. I'm the owner of 29 Alma Villa Avenue.
Thank you. Any changes since the last meeting?
No changes.
All right. Any questions?
None.
You can have a seat for a minute.
Thank you.
I'll remind everybody that the public hearing is still open regarding 29 Alma Villa Avenue. Is anyone from the public who would like to speak regarding this area variance for a new deck? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Does any member have a resolution in the form of a motion regarding 29 Alma Villa?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I have a resolution in the form of a motion.
Thank you.
And the application for area variances requested by Valon Niki, Niki? Whose address is 29 Alma Villa Avenue, Tuckahoe, New York, Section 26, Block 2, Lot 46, for relief from the following sections of the zoning code. 4-3, 4-2, side yard, and 5-1, 6.3, extending a nonconformity. SECRE resolution. Based on this application as submitted, the Zoning Board of Appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SECRE and implementing regulations. Two, the Zoning Board of Appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regards to this action.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiori.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Member Jackman. In favor.
Chairman Revo.
In favor.
Okay. Applicant resides at 29 Alma Villa Avenue in Tuckahoe. Applicant seeking to install a new deck in the rear of the home. The deck will not extend any further to the property line than the existing nonconforming house already does. There has been no opposition to this application and there will be minimal to no impact to the surrounding properties. Therefore, recommendation for the area variances to be granted as to benefit to the applicant to the area variances outweigh the detriment to health, safety, and to the welfare of the neighborhood. The applicant has demonstrated through its submissions and presentation that it has met all aspects of the five-pronged test of the satisfaction of this board. The granting of the variances herein is granted on the condition that work under such variance be commenced and diligently prosecuted within one year of its granting thereof, failing which such variances shall become null and void.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiori.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Member Jackman. In favor.
Chairman Revo.
In favor. Congratulations. That's it. You're done.
Congratulations.
You can leave.
Go build.
Go build. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Next agenda item will be 38 Fairview Avenue, convert a three-family to a two-family and convert a garage to a bedroom. Is the applicant present? State your name for the record, please.
My name is Ted Demore. I'm the architect for the project.
Okay.
With me is the owner of the building.
Yeah, my name is Chong Xin Yin.
All right. Thank you. So you can either both stay or whoever's going to do the majority of speaking can stay.
You're welcome to use the board as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the microphone actually detaches if you'd like to carry that with you.
It's fine where it is. If you want.
More room. You want more room, you can pull it out.
All right. Could you grab the mic?
So just let us know a little background of the submission.
Okay. Building at 38 Fairview is an existing three-family building without a garage. It has a driveway. There used to be a garage. It's a two-story building with a basement and because there's a steep slope in the site, there's a sub-basement also. The garage was converted, there was a garage attached to the house, an attached garage that was converted to a bedroom in 1950. It had a permit that said temporary permit. This house, they're in the building department records, there's a record of this house being turned into a three-family house. They acknowledge that there were three bedrooms in it, but it was a two-family zone for a long time and we are bringing it back to a two-family house, so we are reducing the nonconformity as one of the items we want to do.
So you have, so I understand it, there's a basement, which is one apartment with a kitchen. There's the first floor, which is an apartment with a kitchen, and then there's the second floor, which is an apartment, obviously, with a kitchen.
Yes. Mm-hmm. In fact, I have, in your packet, there's a drawing that shows the exact layout of all the apartments in the building. Two of the bathrooms are pretty substandard. The kitchens are substandard and it's our goal to change these, to make them meet present day clearances and codes for bathrooms and kitchens at least. And we plan to make the basement a one-bedroom unit and to make the first and second floor a duplex unit that'll be a three-bedroom unit. It'll have one bedroom where the garage was before 1950 and it'll have two bedrooms upstairs. The footprint of the house is actually not that big and there's not really room to fit three bedrooms on the second floor, no matter how you slice it up, because you need a bathroom up there. So the variance we need, the only variance we need, since your zoning allows for alterations to nonconforming buildings, as long as you don't increase the level of nonconformity, but you decrease it. So the only variance we need is to allow the one-bedroom that took over the garage in 1950 to remain a bedroom and to allow a parking space in the required front yard setback. So this building lost its one, the only parking space, legal parking space it had in 1950. So for the past 69 years, it has not had a parking space. Our proposal is to give it a parking space in the required front yard set, partially in the required front yard setback, and that's the only variance we need to allow this bedroom conversion to remain permanent.
But that, technically, you are correct, that it's the front yard, but that is presently paved, correct?
It's presently paved.
Is it presently being used as a parking spot?
My client bought it only a few months ago.
Okay, all right. Fair enough.
On the picture, it has a car in the spot currently.
Yes, yeah, it's.
No, that's fine. So as we mentioned in the work area, if you were to put an addition on top of the existing one-bedroom today, use that as your one-bedroom and convert the, what used to be a garage back to a garage, you would not need a variance to park.
Right. We'd need a variance for.
For two spaces instead of four.
Yes. We would be increasing the level of nonconformity of the building.
You're going straight up.
By doing that.
Yeah.
You're not increasing the footprint?
No, but we'd be increasing the level of nonconformity because it wouldn't be respecting the required side yard on this side of the house. And this side of the house has a present encroachment and I can't build really on that wall, so I've got to go through some structural magic to make a wall that's not on top of the wall that's underneath it.
So how far out would you have to go, in your estimation? Closer to the side yard?
Exactly. It's a half a foot off. It's six inches off. But without talking about the addition, if I may, we came here to request a variance for this parking space and I'd like to address that because at the back end of your zoning book, it has a series of proofs that you folks need to, you folks usually consider every time you grant the variance, and that would include whether allowing this variance would create an undesirable change in the neighborhood. And our submission is that if this has been like this for 69 years, allowing it to remain this way will not create an undesirable change in the neighborhood.
Could you, I've got a question for you. On the existing garage right now, what size is that area right now? What footage?
Eleven feet by seventeen and a half.
And what's a typical garage?
It's less than a legal parking space of this village.
What size is a legal parking?
Nine by eighteen.
So it's a little wider, but a little shorter.
Yes.
And is the, does the garage door even work?
It doesn't have a garage door. It's got.
Has windows.
Two windows. When it got converted to a bedroom, they took the garage door out, they put a wall in and put a double window there.
Because I guess the question is, can it even fit a car these days?
Probably not. It can probably not fit a car. Or an SUV. I, sorry, I have one quick question. The sub-basement is currently not in, for any use. Do you have, is there any?
I've got the boiler down there and that's it.
That will not be used as any sort of residential space?
Oh, no, 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 no.
I assume that was the safest.
You have to open a Bilco door to go down there.
We assumed it. Just want to make clear. Thank you.
So the first proof is whether we make an undesirable change in the neighborhood by, would you guys be making an undesirable change in the neighborhood by granting a variance? And since this has been status quo for 69 years, you won't be making a change in the neighborhood by allowing this to stay this way. Second question is whether there's another way that would be feasible, that I wouldn't need the variance. And I think asking a client to put an addition on his house to make an extra bedroom, to make a garage, I think that's not really a feasible request to make. It adds, you know, with any development case, there's a few dollars involved and this is only a two-family house. It's not like there's a lot of money here, that there's an extra budget to add another forty to forty-five thousand dollars to add an addition to it. So we submit that it's not feasible to make that kind of a change. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. And we say that this is an existing nonconforming building on a nonconforming-sized lot, so it's not a substantial variance to put a car in a required front yard. The third, fourth item is whether we'll have an adverse impact on the neighborhood or environmental conditions in this neighborhood by having a car in our front yard. And frankly, everybody that's got a garage attached to their house or like this, that has a driveway in front of it, once they've put the car in the garage, if they've got two cars, they put a second car in the driveway. So this won't be any different than a house that's got a car in a driveway, except that we don't have a garage, we've got a bedroom. So this doesn't change the aspects of the neighborhood at all. And the third is whether, the last is whether this difficulty was self-created and my client didn't create this hardship. It was granted by a permit 69 years ago that we just want to have made permanent and we feel that we can alleviate the situation of not having a parking space by you guys allowing it to be in the front yard. And that's the case.
What's the plan for the exterior of the building? This looks like it's a pretty dramatic gut of the inside. Would that be a good way to describe it? And what's the plan for the exterior of the building?
It's probably going to get new siding, although we haven't discussed it. Mainly I've been concentrating on the interior and the zoning issues.
It's in rough shape. I'm sure it appreciates some love. I mean, I think I would like to say on, as, you know, at the zoning board, we always appreciate when a family is, or when an applicant is reducing the amount of nonconforming in the village, especially bringing the number of units in the building down from three to two. It's, I would, I would say it's always greatly appreciated from our perspective, so we understand where you're coming from.
It is greatly appreciated going from three to two, so that is definitely a positive. We also love people investing in our housing stock and in our neighborhoods, which, you know, many of them are very dated. So, you know, one concern is that it's done with the highest quality and that it's done with a long-term view and it's done, you know, to the greatest extent possible, giving, you know, understanding that people only have a certain amount of resources they can devote to this stuff, so.
And I.
All, you know, the prettier it is, quite honestly, the easier it is to say yes, as part of, as part of the entire package.
Well, if you take a look at the photograph, you'll see that there's a post on the porch, that the middle post is sunken and we're going to be rebuilding the whole porch. And a lot of people come in and ask if they can enclose their porches to make additional living space. We're not doing that. We're going to restore the porch, put better railings on it, better posts and make a nice, it's going to have a nice street presence.
And I want to clarify that in the work session, we had made that comment regarding the second floor above the garage, less in the sense of a requirement, more in the sense of sort of helpful commentary to your client that, you know, if he is eventually going to live at this residence, it makes a large difference in this village for you to have additional parking, as many of us can attest to, and specifically on that street. So it was meant more in constructive feedback, constructive feedback rather than a demand.
It's a great suggestion and as he gets older and makes more money and can afford to come to live, to sell his condo and come to Tuckahoe, he might have enough money to afford to do that and come back. We'll both be back before the board to ask for a variance to do that.
We hope so.
Agreed, but this was not, you know, a condition of approval. This was more looking out for you and your client saying.
Appreciate it.
The parking there is horrendous.
I was thinking out of the box and it's a great suggestion.
All right.
Thank you.
And so the basement has a meter room as well as a vestibule that you're proposing? So is the boiler in the basement, but the meter room's going to be in the basement?
Those are all existing conditions. Con Ed decides where they want things and they put them down.
I get that. Are you proposing three meters or two meters at this point, when you reduce down to two?
Two meters, I guess.
So that's part of your inspection, Mike? You're going to, you're going to check when you go in for your inspections to make sure there's just two meters eventually?
When he does his permit, we'll make sure that it's going to be two.
Probably you'll have a meter for the first floor, one meter for each apartment and one meter for the hallway or the outdoor lights or things like that. So you might have a landlord meter.
Oh, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it might be three meters.
And then you have a public hallway that you're proposing or you're not proposing that public hallway?
That must be on the existing condition plan. Can I take a look? This is the existing condition.
This is going to go away, this public hallway?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm good. And you have a fire escape in the back, correct?
Yes.
And that's good. You'll address it structurally and.
Yeah, I think I already put a note on the plan that's, but I'll check.
Because it looks like it's in pretty bad shape, so whatever they have to do to make it comply.
Yeah, we'll put, we'll address that. We'll probably strip that wall and replace all the bolts.
Yeah. The fire department's going to make them do that, so I just want to make sure you're aware of it.
Thank you. It's a good idea.
Any further questions? Anybody?
Nope. Not for me.
We have none.
Okay.
All right.
So thank you.
Just, I need to draw myself here in case some people have any questions for the public.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. Okay, I'd like to make a motion, open the public hearing for 38 Fairview. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public that would like to speak regarding 38 Fairview Avenue, please step to the mic.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Victoria Angelillo. We'll use 40 Fairview Avenue as the property in question, 100 Main Street. I have two issues. The most important is parking in the garage, even though it's 60 years ago. The previous owner, Joe, or the third owner from now, was Joe. I don't remember his last name. However, I gather it was he and his family who got these temporary permits. I have no idea why he never tried to make it a permanent, but I can guess. You make something permanent from a garage to a bedroom, you're going to pay in taxes because it's more, it's more valuable. That being said, now somebody comes in 60 years later and wants you to ignore that that was a temporary permission to do something and change it permanently. My reason for that is, as we all know, the parking in Tuckahoe is atrocious, especially in that neighborhood. So if I heard this right, he's proposing now to have it almost be three bedrooms, two bedrooms, and want four more bedrooms? Or is it three and two?
Three and two.
Three and two. So three bedrooms, two.
Sorry, three and one. Three and one.
Sorry, three and one.
So the first level, the underneath is one bedroom, the duplex is two. Without a garage.
Three.
It's three. Without a garage, right. Two, four, six, at least, six people at least can be living in the duplex. You have a family, which he's proposing, he wants to live here. He has his bedroom, that's two. He has two children, there's four. He has downstairs, two people, six. So my point is, there's the parking. There's the issue. Now, if I happen to like your proposal to build above, I think that would solve some things. He still gets his square footage of living space, he gets a driveway and.
I would like to clarify, that was not a proposal, though. It was just a suggestion.
Suggestion.
Thank you.
Suggestion. I thought it was a good suggestion to be thought about. So as far as the parking concerned, you know I've been here 10 years. Every building that went up on Main Street, your biggest problems were parking. They didn't go away. They're only continuing to get worse. So I have an issue with that because I do own a building next to it. I can't put parking anywhere. And the hill is hazardous. That's enough for parking. My other issue is Joe's tenants and Joe himself, which to my knowledge, his tenants were three people, they use my garbage. So my garbage bin is on the side where the entrance is, where he's talking about the first level, you go under. My bins are there and they can't hold any more than they're already holding and, thank you, I'm full. I have all my apartments taken care of. I spoke to them before the meeting and we need to find out where on this property that is so used already, where is he going to put his garbage? And I'm addressing it to you because you have to cover it. It can't, it can't continue the way it has been. And obviously, it's been empty, I think, a good, maybe a year. Nobody's been living there that I know of. So that is one of my biggest concerns, that somehow you have to figure out where he's going to put garbage and the access to it because the whole property is falling down. Anybody that lives in this village and walks around, and if you.
So on the garbage thing, you are saying that they never had their own bins, essentially?
No.
And they just threw it over into your bins?
Yes. Because Joe was Joe and we had a relationship, he was there way before we bought the building, it was okay. It was three people. Him and two women that I know of. Sometimes there was a kid living somewhere. They weren't at least six people. Because once you turn that into a rental unit, I don't know how many people you're going to get to live there. So yes, that's one of my concerns. And then parking. Because where are these people going to park?
Well, previously, there were six people. Previously, they required six spots. He's bringing it down to four because he's decreasing. He's took an entire apartment out, so you're going to have.
They never had six spots.
No. The point is that they had three apartments initially, correct?
Correct.
So they've had three apartments for 60 years. They're now going down to two apartments, which means there's a whole less set of adults.
Same amount of bedrooms is what you're telling me.
It is, yes.
So still, my problem is.
The kids aren't, the kids aren't going to be parking cars, I don't think.
I'm not referring.
You said.
Not now. Correct. No, not now.
True.
Sixteen-year-old comes in tomorrow, he gets a car. Mom and dad in this village, cars, so.
Just to clarify, how many spots do you have here in your apartment? How many people do you have in your apartment?
In mine?
Yeah.
I have nine apartments. Five of them have one person living in them.
Okay. And you have zero spots, right?
Excuse me?
You have zero spots, right?
I have zero spots.
Right.
That's the problem here.
Yep. Okay.
You made 100 Main Street, have 21 spots.
Okay.
Okay, I think you understand where I'm coming from. It is an issue. However, you're bringing up that you want to give somebody the right, because one person and the village did not follow through, and turn something that's been temporary into permanent, just because it's been that way 60 years? I can tell you my, I know for a fact, somebody in my family bought a house here and the same thing happened. He thought he was buying a three-family house or a four-family house and it was on the village records that it was not really that. And the village made him turn it back. So I know that it can be done. It's convincing you that you shouldn't allow something to happen just because it's been there 60 years.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your point.
Thank you.
I'd like to, oh, call up the architect, actually. Mr. Demore?
Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. I think she brings up a reasonable point about other, you know, garbage and recycling bins and the like and obviously having them on your own property.
I can point out on the site where they would be.
Yeah, could you discuss how you've thought about it and what, how it would look?
First, if it's only a two-family house and I didn't research, does Tuckahoe pick up rubbish once a week or twice a week?
Twice a week.
Okay. Twice a week.
Plus recycling, so they're coming around three times at least.
Here you see the site plan, but I'll show you on the bigger floor plan here. I have a recess in the building here, and I have plenty of room between the Bilko door and this side of the house for trash barrels and recycling. And if rubbish is picked up twice a week, a two-family house isn't gonna fill more than one trash barrel in between rubbish pickups, and there's room for two trash barrels here easily, and a recycling bin.
Fantastic.
That, that'll be right here. That'll be behind. Mrs. Angelillo's barrels are here, I guess it...
I mean, is there...
The person didn't go do it.
Is there enough room to wheel the trash or the garbage cans?
Yes.
And there's a sidewalk or whatever to make it easy enough to wheel that stuff?
Yes, it's all concrete in that area. Some of it's a little cracked, but that'll be repaired. That's part of the renovation plan. We don't have a detailed site plan for that yet, but...
Okay.
That's it.
What are you doing with the...
That's, um...
Why can't you put the garbage in there? I'm just asking a question.
Uh, that's far to run around to get it. We put it outside.
You guys see what I'm talk- look at the basement plan? He has a, a door going to a room that he's gonna probably use for storage, I'm assuming, or something.
Um, it, it's full of rakes and shovels. There must have been a gardener living there one time.
Right, but it's a pretty big room, so...
Under, underneath the garage currently.
Underneath the garage. It's too far for people to walk. Human nature is, I don't think anybody's ever gonna go there if I put a trash barrel there.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Because we got a pretty big store for something.
And there's no access, though, to the interior space? It's on the outs- exterior surface, right?
Most buildings have to go...
Okay. No, I just wasn't sure if there was interior, okay.
Are there any other questions?
Ms. Gauzle?
Uh, not for me, thank you.
Nope.
All right, um, I have a suggestion for Mrs. Angelillo. If we need parking spaces, she has a lot of storefronts. We could easily convert any of those to a number of parking spaces by taking the usable space, just like we're suggesting here, taking the usable space away and making parking spaces inside her building.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak regarding Fairview Avenue? Seeing none, I will make a motion to leave the public hearing open. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that's it till next month. If you would, please, again, the out-of-the-box recommendation was really for your benefit, the benefit of your client. If you could, consider it and do the, a back-of-the- envelope estimate of what it may cost. It would go a long way, because as you heard, the concern of this board and at least one tenant is the parking, and believe us...
And then you'd have a garage for your rubbish bins.
And you'd have a garage for your rubbish bins, right.
You don't have to go all the way around.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next item is twenty, twenty-one Columbus Avenue, which is a special use permit for a new daycare center. I know the applicant's here. Please step forward. State your name for the record.
Sure, I'll do so while the more important people get here. My name's Adam Weckstein. I'm from the law firm of Hockerman, Tortorello and Weckstein, and I represent the applicant. Here with me are Cheryl Swiker, who's an architect from Jarmel Kiesel, who's the architect and engineer on the project, and Andrew Valari, who's a traffic engineer from Stonefield Engineering, who will be talking about parking and answering any questions you may have regarding traffic in this immediate site. As the chairman has said, we're here for a special permit. We are seeking to reuse, rehabilitate the building that has traditionally been Epstein's for decades, the Epstein Store on Columbus Avenue. It will be a two-story facility. As the facility is located in the business zone, daycare is permitted by a special permit, and of course, you're the authority to, to grant, consider that permit. We also need site plan approval from the planning board, and so far, there's been one technical meeting, two work sessions, and one public hearing session, and I think it's fair to say primarily focused on the sufficiency of the parking. Your ordinance is a little bit quirky in that because daycare center does not have a parking requirement listed in the code, it's the planning board and site plan approval that determines the appropriate number of spaces, and you determine whether the number of spaces is sufficient to serve the use. It's sort of a little strange overlap. What has happened so far is we have submitted studies, doing actual empirical evidences to the parking, involving other daycare centers run by the learning experience in the metro area, things that are comparable. The reports have been submitted. Your own traffic consultant, Mr. Jacomart, has reviewed it. They've worked together with our consultant, as well as the police chief, the village administrator, come up with a plan for the area, which our traffic engineer will explain. We believe actually improves existing conditions. The final thing I would say is that under CECL, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, this is in fact a type-two action requiring no environmental review, is the replacement of a commercial or residential use with another commercial or residential use that's permitted in the zone in an existing building. And the way that provision of CECL is written, existing use encompasses use via special permit.
Good.
And without further ado, let me introduce one of the important people, Cheryl, Cheryl Swiker.
Excellent, thank you.
Swiker, excuse me.
That's okay. All right, good evening. I just wanted to start by giving you a little bit of background about our firm and our experience with daycares. We've overseen the development of close to three hundred childcare centers for a lot of the major brands that you may be familiar with. I personally have overseen close to a hundred and fifty of those. We've done over thirty projects in the state of New York alone. And we have centers recently completed in our urban areas like, uh, New Rochelle, Brooklyn, and Long Island City, and we have centers under construction in White Plains and Briar Cliff Manor. Just to give you an idea of some of the urban, more urban centers that we've done. So I want to talk about a little bit what a childcare center is and its operations. So the age groups that will be supervised in the center range from six weeks to six years. And the license, the center will be licensed by the state of New York to operate. So the learning experience itself has close to two hundred and forty operating centers, and they're watching close to thirty thousand kids on a daily basis. So their operations are very thorough. So the center will operate from six-thirty AM to six-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, with no weekends. And I'll talk a little bit about the operations of drop-off and how the space will be used.
Good.
So I believe we're all familiar with the existing building, which is currently Epstein's. Um, so we have our main entrance here on Columbus Avenue, where parents will walk their children in to a secure area in the reception area, where they'll actually use a key fob and sign their child in for the day. And this ensures that the child now is in a secure environment. They do not leave that environment while they're under the supervision of the daycare. So once they enter through the vestibule and reception area, they go to their classroom. And we find that that process takes approximately five minutes, and the traffic engineer will also testify to that in terms of studies that he's done, in terms of that, how long that takes. And we find that it's actually a little bit quicker for pickup because they don't have the check-in procedure. They do check the child out, but it's usually easier during pickup.
You mean five minutes from getting out of the car to getting back in the car?
Correct.
To get like an infant with their diapers and all that?
Correct.
Okay.
Moms get efficient. And dads.
I would say so. Five minutes is kind of quick.
Right. So we have a series of classrooms that are aged and grouped based on the licensing requirements for the state and have the proper number of teachers supervising them, which range again from six weeks to six years. There is also an indoor play area, and we'll have an outdoor play area as well that'll have each appropriate equipment in it.
What are you doing, if they're there from six-thirty AM to six-thirty PM, or potentially, do you have a kitchen? What do you do for food and food service?
Right, so in the beginning, the, the children will bring their meals with them. They do provide snacks, and as the enrollment increases, they will warm foods. It's not a cooking kitchen. So they're not preparing foods on-site, they're just warming foods and then serving it.
And the age range, the age range here?
Six weeks to six years.
I must have missed that, I'm sorry.
So right now, we're planning the center to have, to be licensed. It can facilitate a hundred and seventy-four children and twenty-nine staff, of which includes the receptionist, which also functions as one of the teachers. So we find that during the day, that the drop-off happens over a certain period in the morning. And the traffic engineer will testify to this as well, but basically, it's staggered. It's not like a school, they don't all show up at the same time. It's based on the parents' work schedule when they go in the morning. Same in the afternoon. It's over a period of two to three hours in the afternoon, same as the morning. And we find that there's a percentage of kids that are siblings, so they're coming with the same parent. We find that's about twenty-five percent of the occupancies are siblings. And on any given day, we find that about ten percent of the kids could be sick. So really, the, the center is not always a hundred percent full. Obviously, these numbers are best-case scenario based on full enrollment, enrollment, and that's what we're designing the building to.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, so at any given day, ten percent of your student population is not there?
That's, it's possible based on, on past studies.
Okay.
Right. There are sicknesses, vacations, whatever it may be.
Okay.
Um, so the building itself will be creating a series of classrooms, all of which will be designed to the most stringent of the code, which we find is the I-4 use, institutional use. So each room will have two exit doors out of it. There'll be a sprinkler system in the building, we'll have a fire alarm, and there'll be procedures for emergencies that licensing will require as part of that. The only other thing here was, we wanted to talk about the building itself. We won't be making any major changes. We'll be just cleaning it up, doing some new signage, and creating this new play area in the back for the children.
I got a question, I got a question on that. That's where the loading dock is, right, in the back?
The loading dock is going to be removed.
Okay, and the driveways, is there gonna be any cars going into the driveway? Or is it always gonna be blocked off with a gate in the front?
Right, right now, we're showing three tandem spaces.
So three there.
On the side here, yeah.
The staircase in the back that leads down to the tracks, is that your property? Or does it belong to Metro?
Yeah, we're gonna remove that because it's not technically on their property. It's on the railway property, I believe.
Okay.
So we're gonna remove that.
You're not using it, all right.
No, and what, so what we had to do is we had to add a second stair inside the building. So we have two stairs in the building that both egress directly to the outside per code, and we're also adding an elevator.
To the best of your knowledge, you mentioned you have about two hundred and forty facilities, like, assuming throughout the United States?
The Learning Experience is currently operating approximately two hundred and forty centers, yes.
How many of those ballpark, or in an area as densely populated as you're proposing here in Tuckahoe?
I would say we have a number of centers that we're working on in New York City in the boroughs. So I would say maybe fifteen to twenty that were currently either open or in development at this point.
Well, my, my question is, are any of them, have any of them been in operation for a period of time that are in an area as densely populated as this?
Yeah, I know Long Island City, Queens.
Okay.
They've been open for about a year, I believe, now. New Rochelle, they've been open maybe six to eight months now. Um, we have one in Bay Ridge, Brooklyn. They've been open maybe just over a year now, so...
Any problems with any of those? Any citations from the local municipalities or police departments regarding drop-offs and pickups?
I'm not aware of them.
And maybe, can I just take a step back here? Do you have, you have other individuals with you here? Do they have different roles as far as questions they can answer for us? Could you clarify that?
Our traffic engineer will certainly be talking about traffic and how the parking will work and some proposals that we...
I just, as the architect, I also want you to be asking you questions about the corporate. Do you have a corporate representative here as well that could answer us?
They're not here today, but I work with corporate on a daily basis. I'm very familiar with their operations.
All right, so you can let us know if you're not comfortable answering the question. If you don't...
That's fine.
Yeah, just let us know.
Yeah, 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 no, that's fine. We do a majority of their work, so I'm very familiar with.
Great.
Um, I got one. What do they do about weather? Get a snowstorm, do they close like schools do? Do they stay open? Do you know?
That I, I don't know if I could answer that, yeah.
That's why I liked one of them here.
Yeah.
Okay, um, did anyone have any questions about the actual architectural plans? Did anyone have any concerns?
Ask them already, nope.
Questions mainly pickup or drop-off and parking.
So our traffic engineer will speak a little more about that, yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Can I, anybody mind if I just slid the podium? I think it's on wheels.
No idea.
Perfect. For the record, my name is Andrew Valari. That's V as in Victor, I-L-L-A-R-I. I am a traffic engineer with the firm Stonefield Engineering and Design. We've done a lot of work on this project with the planning board already. There's a couple members in the audience that have heard a presentation I'm about to give a couple times before. For you guys, it'll be brand-new. My area of expertise is traffic engineering. Be able to talk about traffic and parking and how these sites operate. We've had the benefit of working with Jarmel Kiesel and the Learning Experience exclusively for the greater part of ten years at this point, so we've studied a number of their sites. The board is asking a number of very good questions about are there any similar operating sites that we could take a look at, and we have, and that actually forms the basis of how we get to our conclusions and our reports. And just to talk more about operations and how these centers work and how it's different, because a lot of times we see concerns at municipalities. You have a hundred and seventy-eight students and twenty-nine teachers or employees total. How could that possibly work with drop-off and pickup? That seems like a lot going on. The fact of the matter is that TLE, I'm gonna call them TLE every now and again, they operate a rolling drop-off and pickup. So you can drop off your child whenever it's convenient for you. So in the morning, you're on the way to work, you drop your kid off on the way. You don't have to be there at eight-fifteen like elementary school is. You can be there whenever you want. And that's why we see a dispersion of traffic rather than a spike at, at eight-fifteen.
Nut, just to interrupt you for one second, do you have actual physical data on the splits as far as your populate? What percentage comes in at six-thirty, six-thirty to seven, seven to eight? Would you mind sharing that with us?
Absolutely, absolutely. We've worked a lot with George Jacomart, the village's reviewing, traffic engineer. We actually, as Ms. Swiker mentioned, they have key card access to when you drop your kid off. You, you know, you boop the thing like you're at the gym. That keeps track of when exactly they get there, and we have a lot of that data from operating facilities in, in the suburban areas, very, very similar to Tuckahoe. Actually, all the facilities that we've studied are less transit-oriented than Tuckahoe is. You've got a great community here, a downtown area that's connected, walkable, access to the train. A lot of the stud- I'm not gonna say a lot, all of the sites that we studied are much, much more suburban, where people are using a car exclusively. Here, you have the greatest percentage of sites that I've looked at for traffic engineering in terms of TLE, of the potential to use other modes of transit to get here. You could have people that are using the train in Tuckahoe to get to work. On their way there, they're gonna drop their kid off at the daycare and then park in the train parking lot with their permit that they may have. And as we mentioned, the daycares are open six-thirty in the morning, six-thirty in the evening, nothing on the weekends. We see that drop-off in the morning, it happens pretty much between six-thirty and nine-thirty in the morning.
So if I could go back to that, could you give us a rough idea of between six-thirty and nine-thirty? Let's say we have half-hour slots, correct? So we're gonna have seven half-hour slots between six-thir- uh, excuse me, I didn't do that correctly. Five half-hour slots between six-thirty and nine, correct?
Maybe six, three hours.
No, it's two and a half, six-thirty to nine. Okay, thank you. Anyway, could we, uh, could we just get a, and I'm not gonna hold you anything, could we get a rough breakdown of kind of percentage of? You've got a hundred-and-forty parents, based on twenty-five percent of them having two kids, so we have a hundred-and-forty cars. Um, what are kind of those per- rough numbers that you're planning on coming in?
I think what will answer the question, um, is how much traffic is gonna come in one single peak hour, what's the busiest time? Um, this is based on counts that we've done at other centers, and, um, just off the bat, most of the daycare centers that TLE, uh, operates and builds are ten thousand square feet, eleven thousand square feet. This one is, you know, in that four- uh, thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand square feet. And with the two-story building, you have a little bit of a loss of efficiency for like stairwells and things like that, so that, that's why this works. Um, but the point of this is that we've studied very, very similar sites. Um, and what we think is gonna be the busiest amount of traffic in one single hour would be in between fifty and sixty cars arriving, um, to the center. Now, if you wanna break that up over a half an hour, that's thirty cars, if you wanna break it up over fifteen minutes, it's fifteen, uh, cars.
Fine, and what period is that, that you expect?
Um, it's in the evening.
And not in the morning, you don't see that?
It's very roughly the same in the morning, it's a little bit less.
And what period is that, excuse me, what period is that specifically in the morning?
What period is the, the peak hour, is that happen? Um, let me get that for you. So, we, we did, uh, I wanna be clear about this, we did, uh, a parking, a parking study in, um, parking study in May, when we first appeared at the planning board. Then we did another two days of parking study in June, before school ended. And we also did a traffic study, I know those, those days where we were counting traffic at the adjacent intersection, Columbus Avenue and Main Street. So, um, based on those, uh, observations, we know that the, um, the busiest times of day in Toccoho, where we think that it'd be conservative to think that this center would also be busiest, is between eight fifteen in the morning and nine fifteen, and then in the evening from five to six.
Okay.
A- and, and some of the reasons why we don't think that there's a spike in traffic is, as Ms. Schweiker mentioned, that there's ten percent of the students are absent on a daily basis. Um, twenty-five percent of them are siblings, that means they drive in the same car, you know, they get dropped off together. Um, but regarding drop-off and pickup, when a student arrives, or a child arrives at the center, their parent has to find a parking space. In this case, they'd be finding all, uh, on-street parking. There are gonna be a couple of spaces on the property, those are gonna be used by employees who are gonna be there throughout the course of the day. You don't really want cars turning over in that area, um, you're gonna be tandem parked, so they'll be like parked headlong, they'll be blocking each other in. So, that's why we think that that would be best served for employees who are gonna be there for six, eight hours, and they can coordinate if they need to get out.
Uh, you say they're gonna have to find parking spaces in order to dr- uh, drop the children off, okay? What you're saying is the three spots that are out in the front now, which are parking meters, and that determine that they are gonna be specific for your pickup and drop-off, though they can park down by, say, Roma Restaurant, something like that, they're gonna have to walk up and everything else like that. They're park across the street in the parking lot, okay, and then walk across the street and everything else like that, there to drop the children off?
Correct, so they would park wherever they can find space. So, we did three different days of parking counts, from six in the morning-
Difficult when there's very small children and everything else like that.
Of course, of course, I totally understand that. Um, the, the exhibit I just introduced on my, to my right, um, shows the areas that we canvassed for our parking studies. We were here on, uh, Thursday, May twenty-third, um, Tuesday, May twenty, or sorry, Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, and Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, between six in the morning and seven at night, which kind of, it captures, um, when this used to be operating. We did continuous counts, so we know how parking in the area fluctuated, because parking is complicated, it's very dynamic. You have parking at six AM is not the same as parking in noon, and it's not the same as parking at seven. Um, so, we have a studies, um, that show how much people park in these areas. Now, uh, this, everything that's highlighted here are, uh, metered spaces, and they vary in, in duration. So, there are some two-hour spaces, there are some, uh, four-hour spaces, twelve-hour, uh, and then there's, uh, spaces that you can pay to park there all day. Um, and what we think is gonna happen, and we've worked with your, uh, George Jockmart, your reviewer on this, is that uh, parents are gonna park in the spaces that are available, and they're only gonna be there for, um, less than ten minutes. We've also done studies that, that, uh, look specifically at how long does the drop-off take? You know, it's very, very good thought to have about how long does it take for someone to get out of their car, get their kid out of the car seat, and then get in the building, check them in, come back, and then leave. Uh, we find that it's somewhere between five and ten minutes, and we've done a lot of these studies, we have a lot of data points, and obviously, it varies, you know, if your kid got sick, uh, you might take longer than if you just, you're in a rush, you go and get your kid and you leave. Um, so, the average is between five and ten minutes, and we think that that would be applicable to Toccoho. Um, but to go back to the exhibit on my right, parents can find parking that's closest to the site. And those spaces today are two-hour spaces on Columbus. If you get further up north on Columbus, towards the, uh, community center, those are twelve-hour spaces, that's what's shown in yellow here. Um, the different colors correlate to different meters of parking. So, um, we've been working a lot with the planning board to determine where our employee is gonna park, where our, uh, parents parking. Um, and I could break it down for any different way, we've looked at it a, a number of ways. Um, but what I wanna introduce is, um, an exhibit that's very, very similar. It's identical to a concept plan that's being proposed by the village, separate from this application. What this shows-
Could you move the camera so he can, we can see the plans?
Donny, is it Donny? Excuse me, one minute. Don?
No, it's not, you guys don't have to do anything.
Not you.
It's the camera, the camera.
Excuse me, one second. Don? Can you put this on the camera, please?
No, it's not on the plane right now.
Thank you.
There you go. So, what this shows is, um, existing condition on Columbus Avenue, on the top half of the page, and then the proposed changes that the village is currently contemplating on the bottom half. So, um, the parking spaces in orange are two-hour parking meters. Um, and you can see on the east side of Columbus, on the, the backside of the parking garage for that residential development just up the road, there's a large area of, um, shoulder that could be used for parking, but currently, it's being just striped out. Um, we've talked to a number of members at the village, um, village's reviewers, and, and can't really come up with a reason why. Uh, so, that actually is going to be converted to provide additional parking.
Can you point to that on the, on the map, please? I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So, so today, um, this area on the east side of Columbus Avenue-
Right.
This is, this is the development, this is twenty-one Columbus Avenue, Epstein's. This is the paint store.
Right.
This is directly across the street from the paint store, this is the, uh, residential development, they've got a structured parking garage right here. Um, the, the hatched area that I was talking about is on the east side of the street, no one can park there today.
Didn't they take them out already?
Not as of this, not of this plan, I think.
I thought they, as of this morning, they were gone.
We'll share, we'll share.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, this was, this, perhaps they did? Um, this was contemplated, uh, at the last planning board work session last week, I, I'm not aware if they, if they have been changed. Um, but on the bottom half of the plan is what they're gonna be, what, what the east side of Columbus Avenue is gonna look like. Um, you have a longer stretch of parking, and the combination of uses that we have right now, our combination of meters, are longer-term meters, which would help, uh, employees for the daycare, it would also help employees for any other use in the area. Uh, you've got a daycare center right here, we've heard, uh, right here in, in Village Hall, we've heard, uh, a number of comments and concerns about the operation of that facility and where their employees can find parking. This improvement is something that the village is contemplating regardless of this application.
Right.
It would help the daycare center, the TLE, it's also going to help any community that has long-term, any, any use that has uh, long-term parking needs for employees that they can't really find parking right now. Because Columbus Avenue, this whole stretch on the west side of the street is all two-hour meters. So, if you're an employee and you wanna park there, you're gonna have to move it every two hours.
Could I just interrupt you for one second? Is this bottom part with the village has kind of proposed currently?
Yes.
Okay, this is not their proposal, it's the village's. But this reflects the village's proposal, okay. Thank you.
And the village's proposal would go through regardless if they move in or not?
Well, except, uh, for the fifteen-minute spaces.
Except for the fifteen-minute spaces.
The three spaces that are on the southbound side and the three spaces that are northbound side, those would be specific, you know, to this.
Is it still three on the north?
You might have to repeat that into the microphone there.
Except, except for the, uh, fifteen-minute parking spaces, the three ones that are on the southbound side and the three that are on the northbound side of Columbus, that would be specific, uh, to this project.
Thank you.
I point out one other thing, too?
Sure.
Now, you got the two businesses, you got Roma's, you got Tocco Paint and Glass. Now, they have no meters, people don't know that. So, if they wanna drop their kid off, oh, there's no meters, you know, I'll drop, go in there, I'll park there, and I'll, and I'll walk, I'll walk into there. Then you got the business over there, you can't park here, huh?
I understand, so, the, the paint store, uh, right next door, um, you could also feasibly get confused and just drop off your kid there. The paint store has signs in their parking lot that, that say, you can't park here unless you're for the business, or you have a permit. That, that property owner also, um, you know, sells the parking spaces to commuters in the area. And there's signs all over the place that say, you're gonna get towed unless you're here for these two things. Um, I'd imagine that if there's someone destined to the daycare center and they go on private property, I mean, it's up to the owner of the private property how they handle that for the, the restaurant further up the street, it's possible.
So, there's an increase in spaces essentially of eleven spots?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, that's correct, and the majority of the increase is in, uh, long-term spaces. So, um, parents dropping off and picking up don't take all that long. Um, they're actually gonna use probably the spaces that are closest to this facility, and they're gonna use the same space over and over again, because it's gonna be people coming, people leaving.
But we're essentially also losing some spots in the sense that you're turning, we're turning them into fifteen-minute parking. So, we have six spots that essentially are no longer available to someone who's, say, having dinner, uh, across the street, correct?
That's, that's correct, and what I wanna do is introduce one more exhibit.
Just a question on the fifteen minutes, is that for a few hours in the morning and a few hours in the evening, or is it going to be all day? Undecided.
I, I think Chief Costanza mentioned-
Different opinions on that.
Okay.
We originally recommended that it be fifteen minutes from seven to nine and four to six. The police chief has a preference that it be fifteen minutes all day long, because it makes it more difficult to enforce if it changes, you know, he's concerned that if somebody arrived at three o'clock, and it says you can park for two hours, but then the sign, in my view, the sign would say four to six, maximum fifteen minutes parking, so. But, that's his preference. There's also, I think, there's an advantage of having fifteen-minute spaces all day long, there are other businesses that like to have that, you know, short trip in and out, so it could serve other people as well in the area.
Right, so there's no guarantee they'd be dedicated to the-
We are not allowed to dedicate it to a particular private user.
Just wanna make that point.
It's public parking.
It's not gonna be signed for daycare parking only, it's just gonna be for fifteen-minute, you could be fifteen-minute going to the post office, fifteen-minute.
Right.
Um, or any other use.
Good.
Um, the exhibit I, I introduced on my right, um, this shows the average of, uh, the parking collection that we did. So, the, the blue, um, equates to how much parking is currently going on in Toccoho, and that's in the same, um, corridor that I introduced first. Um, that's the, the scope of the study. Um, and then the orange is what would be added on top of that as a result of this daycare. Um, and you can see that, uh, the dotted black lines at the top indicate how much capacity there is. And there's two lines because, um, there's a certain amount of parking right now. And then if the village, uh, finalizes the plan for, uh, the concept I just introduced to you, there'd actually be eleven more spaces, and that would accounts for the difference in the two dotted lines. So, based on this, you can see that, um, there is, after the project gets built, there would still be extra parking, uh, throughout the course of the day. And just to walk through this a little bit more, what the blue shows me is how people currently park in Toccoho. You get there at six AM, you can find any place to park. You know, if you're getting on the train at six AM, you've got prime spots for parking, because not everyone is awake yet. Throughout the course of the day, people keep arriving, people keep arriving, people keep arriving. And in the middle of the day, you see a little bit of fluctuation, relatively, it stays the same. That means that people are here, they're in the downtown, they're coming and going for the different retail uses in the area, the restaurants. Um, and then it starts to dip off throughout the course of the day, um, towards seven o'clock. After seven o'clock, I wanna make it clear that, um, all the meters, um, stop being for pay, they're free after seven o'clock. Um, you probably already know that. Um, and, um, the point I'm trying to make is that this daycare use is a use that needs a special permit, uh, to go into that space. There's other uses that could go in here that have different time of day variations. What I mean by time of day variations is that the daycare has the most people coming and going to it in the morning, when people, parents are dropping off, and in the evening, when parents are picking up. The amount of people that are coming in between then, those hours, are very, very few. Um, the amount of parking that would be there is just the employees who are finding long-term spaces and just staying in the same spot. Um, you could have another use, a retail or a restaurant that goes in here. Those would be busiest in the middle of the day, when all of the other uses are, are busy. Or you could have a restaurant that gets busier at night, similar to the restaurant up the street or the restaurant across the street. Now, you have people arriving at the same time, fighting for the same amount of parking. With the daycare, you actually see that people are arriving in the morning, when there's the most availability, to drop their kid off, pick it up, pick them up. Um, not much activity in the middle of the day, so there's a net impact of very, very little. And then they're closed on the weekend. Um, you could have any other retail use here or restaurant use here that is generating parking, is generating traffic, and this use would be vacant. Um, so you have no extra demand on the weekend as a, as a result of this project.
How many, excuse me, oh, you have twenty-nine teachers, okay, how many administrative and, um, uh, support staff do you have?
So, twenty-nine, um, teachers is a number that is directly related to the licensed capacity of the center in terms of how many students you could have in a building of this size. There's a certain ratio of students to, uh, administrators or caregivers. Twenty-nine is the total number, um, and of that, you'd have two people that are administrative. And they also, they're not, they're not purely administrative, they only answer phones, they actually share roles a little bit, where that they also, you know-
Is that, is that over and above the twenty-nine?
No, it's included in twenty-nine.
So, which is, so, if they're working, they don't answer the phones and everything else like that, they're doing something else, so the phones are just idle or whatever.
Twenty-nine total people, um, what I said before about the rolling drop-off and pickup, staff actually is very, very similar. Um, at six AM, there's not twenty-nine people here.
That was my next question, is, uh, with regard to, okay, you said, uh, you start at six-thirty, okay? How many people, and evidently, six o'clock between six and six-thirty, there's gonna be a lot of spaces available and everything else like that. How, how do your, uh, employees, you know, configure within the, uh, time period?
I'm going for a record in exhibits introduced at this point. I have, I think, four more, so we're almost there. Um, so, to, to answer your question, employees come and go throughout the day. There's the most amount of employees there when there's the most amount of students there. So, at six-thirty AM, there may only be two or three staff members there to open up the facility and to be ready for when children start to come. And then more and more arrive throughout the course of the day. Um, they have part-time staff that are needed on a, uh, they're only needed in the middle of the day for a four-hour period. That's all the time that they're there. So, what this exhibit shows is, I guess I liked the color scheme, blue and orange, but the, the blue, in this case, represents the amount of parking of employees. So, this is how we see, in looking at other daycare centers, how employees accumulate throughout the day. And you can see it's a bit of a bell curve, um, and since it's increasing throughout the course of the day, more employees are coming, and then as soon as, um, uh, children start to get picked up, employees start to leave. And it's all about the ratio of how many children are there versus how many staff are there. Uh, so, the orange represents, um, parents coming to drop off. Um, so, and, and you see the, the spike in the morning of when parents are dropping off, and then you see the, uh, spike in the afternoon when parents are picking up.
If I could just ask, it looks like you're assuming a maximum employee parking of fifteen?
Uh, employee parking of fourteen, yes.
Fourteen.
So, that, that is-
So, out of your twenty-nine employees, you're assuming only fourteen are gonna park?
Exactly, yes. So, we've studied a lot of these daycare centers, and we've never seen, uh, they all have around ten thousand square feet. They all have around a hundred-and-eighty-five, um, children licensed capacity- They all have around a hundred and eighty-five, um, children licensed capacity. They all have around twenty-five to thirty, um, parents, uh, not parents, twenty-nine, twenty-five to thirty employees. And throughout all of our studies, we've never seen thirty employees means thirty cars. Means that they're either carpooling, they're either taking public transit to get there. In Tuckahoe, you're very well situated for people that work in this facility not to drive a car. You could have people that live in the community. You could have people that take the train from other surrounding communities to get here and not result in a additional car parked.
And that's specifically suburban daycare center?
Correct.
Numbers. So even in the suburbs, you found people have carpooled and commuted. And those, have those been provided to you as well? Sorry. Have those, those numbers have been provided to you as well and you agree with their analysis?
Yes, we have reviewed the numbers from the other centers that they, uh, provided. And we have compared them also with, uh, you know, standards that we have from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And they are, in our opinion, they're all, you know, in logical, um, fashion.
So in your opinion, you agree with his fifty, his fourteen, yeah, it's not a hard number, but you agree with roughly, you know, half his employees are going to be actually parking?
Yeah, I think it's that range. And I think it's also my understanding that not all twenty-nine employees are there at the same time either. Some of them are on relatively short schedules and, and, you know. So between all of that and, and the kind of, uh, you know, there is a pedestrian environment. There are people using public transportation between all of that. I think that number of fourteen, fifteen cars for employee parking is, is, I think, in a reasonable number.
Thank you.
Yeah. Based on the studies that I've seen and, and the input that I've received so far, I believe there is ample parking. My concern is this. I'm a part-time employee and I can get away with sneaking up Underhill or whatever Fairview and parking for two hours. Jutting out of the place, you know, moving it, doing whatever I have to do. Does the daycare center have any plans on subsidizing their employees for parking and encourage them, encouraging them to use the metered spots rather than taking residential spots away?
It's a good question. And just before we move on from what George just mentioned, I just want to address that, um, twenty-nine employees would be there if there are a hundred and seventy-eight children in the facility.
Right.
That's assuming a hundred percent occupancy. There's very few centers that are operating that have a hundred percent, um, a hundred percent enrollment. You have some issues with, um, uh, efficiency. You know, you have to move kids around from different rooms. Uh, so twenty-nine employees in the building is only when there's a hundred and seventy-eight children and it's not always going to be the case. I, it'd be rare that that would be. Regarding what would TLE be willing to do to make sure that their employees park and be a good neighbor and park in the, where the designated areas that's going to be added on Columbus Avenue? What I can say is, uh, if people park i- in illegal areas, places where it's not permitted to park, they'll get tickets just the same way everyone else gets tickets. What we're going through right now at the planning board, and I shouldn't say we, it's, it's a decision that our tenant has to make, the, the learning experience, because no one here is on behalf of the, the learning experience. They have to make a decision and they're currently going through negotiations right now with, uh, the, the village attorney and, uh, and the village attorney, about what extent they'd be willing to go to. And just to, um, bring you up to speed on, on what happened, what's the most recent on that? The idea of, um, the daycare purchasing, uh, parking permits, um, in the Lake Avenue lot across, across the tracks, um, that is currently being contemplated. Nothing, uh, set in stone yet, but that's just to give you a flavor of, of the type of negotiations that they're going on.
That's, that's five spots.
That's five spots, right. So let me put it for you this way.
Well, I, I would like to clarify, I think clarified. Tom can correct me if I'm wrong. I want to clarify Tom's point. He, I don't think he's concerned about people illegally parking.
Right.
What we're concerned about here is that, that specific neighborhood you're going to be in, as you go up Underhill Road, we have residents there that already struggle day-to-day with parking in front of their own houses. And if even five of your employees go up there and they park in very legal spots on a public street, it's now just made the lives of people up there just a little bit worse. And I think that's one of our primary concerns.
And it's two-hour parking.
And if there's...
To jockey it. Right.
But it's free two-hour parking.
It's free two-hour parking.
Right.
Right. So, so that, those are concerns that also came up at the planning board. That issue to me exists without the daycare being here, right? You have a daycare in this building. You have, uh, places of business elsewhere in the community that don't have parking. And that's what makes Tuckahoe such a great place. You have a very walkable area.
But that, most of those places of business aren't going to have fifteen employees looking for parking every single day.
Right.
That's a very large number of employees.
I understand. I understand. So what this exhibit shows and what, uh, George Jockmart agrees roughly with is that there'd be fifteen, fourteen, um, employees that are going to drive a car here. On the site plan that Ms. Schweiker, uh, introduced, there is going to be a, uh, three spaces in the driveway throat where the people that are going to be there, like the, uh, the, the person that is there throughout the course of the day, they'd park, uh, in that area. So now we go from fourteen down to eleven. If you buy, if TLE, still under negotiation, would buy, uh, five permit spaces, that number goes from eleven down to six. Now we have six people that we're adding somewhere to a, a meter that is conducive to housing.
And that's great. And I think what Tom was saying, and not to put words in his mouth, was that, um, we would like to see some evidence that TLE is encouraging. Either you're through financial incentive or something of that manner, encouraging its employees to use the public parking and not to go up two blocks away and park in front of someone's house.
But you make a good point. You're down to six. So now there's six people that can go up Underhill and, and sneak in free parking. Yeah, that might, might, my only concern, right. What, what are you going to do to encourage your employees not to use?
Because I was making...
There will be, we've already committed, we've already committed to the planning board to have an internal policy that will be distributed to the employees, saying they shouldn't be parking.
That's what I wanted to hear.
We're not, at this point, paying for meters or doing anything like that. And as a lawyer's answer, I mean, the issue of people parking on the non-metered spots on residential streets is, is not something that's, that's generated or, or unique to us. It's, it's really an enforcement issue. If it's a priority for the village, they're the ones who've got to change the rules and, and work with it.
Well, I, I'll push back on that. We could turn around and say, no, you need to get, you know, twenty-seven spots dedicated to your, to your employees. And that would eliminate any issue of any of your employees trying to, you know, park in two-hour free spots. So I don't agree with it.
We're just trying to figure out a constructive, a constructive way to do, to do both.
No, no, and I understand that. And I think what we've done goes to resolve that issue. You are obviously the ones making the judgment, but from a legal standpoint, I don't think that would be within your rights to do if it's not something that's attributable to, to our use, but a general problem in the village. So I'm not sure I agree with your premise, but that's, I, I'm not here to, we want to try to satisfy.
May, maybe less of a lawyer perspective and more of a just, to be a positive part of the community, it might be nice to encourage employees that may not be being paid enough on an hourly basis to pay for their own parking, you know, easily. Uh, it would go a long ways to being a positive neighbor to provide two dollars a day to your employee to be able to park, um, or to encourage that parking.
Because your business is a bit unique. N- normal working hours are good eight to ten a day. So nobody's going to try to park in a two-hour spot for an eight, eight-hour job. If you have part-time employees, they can try to sneak up into the two-hour.
Well, they said that many of their employees show up for short shifts, Tom. Remember, he just said that.
Right. And they, and they will, they will, if I am them, I would, I would show up into the free parking spot. And again, you can't force...
Oh, four hours is the longest, shortest?
Right.
Four is the shortest shit.
Okay. Thank you. Are you, are you all set? Uh, can we kind of shoot questions at you now?
He has more charts.
You have more charts?
I have more charts.
I want to hear all the traffic studies because this is just parking.
Oh, wow. You're glutton for punishment.
I got one for, while you're on, while you're on parking.
I'm still on parking, by the way.
Uh, do you guys do special events?
No.
No. Then they're like, no Halloween parties, like say coming up? No, no, okay, invite your parents?
No.
No? Okay. All right.
Wine and cheese.
Because I work at, I work in a school. I know these things. You know, all of a sudden the parents, the parking is like a disaster.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. Where you invite, you know, like, parents coming. No, that doesn't happen.
Okay.
Since we're talking about employees and parking and where are they going to park, what this exhibit shows is looking in the same area that we were talking about, just look at four-hour meters, twelve-hour meters, and then the meters where you can park all day. It's a flat fee. This shows the, um, the availability in those spaces. You see early in the morning, no one's parked there, right? And then you see as you go later in the day, they're all getting taken up by people that are commuting.
I need a set of new glasses, I think. Could you explain what the red versus orange is? I can't read those.
So the orange is the average of the utilization when we were there in June. Now, the, the concept plan on Columbus Avenue where additional long-term meters would be provided, that's what the, the light orange, um, line means. It means that that would be increased. There's more availability for long-term parking. And then that's why there's a difference between these black lines. It means that in the future, with the village's plan, that's completely separate from this application, there'd be more places to park for long-term parking. Um, we, we discussed this at the, the planning board work session, but the fact that people that are coming to Tuckahoe and work and look for parking for an extended amount of time are doing so on residential streets, that's happening because that's where parking is free. And that's where the fringe between paid parking and free parking starts. And that, that's unfortunately why people are parking there. It's part of a, a, a bigger macroscopic issue that Tuckahoe has regardless of the daycare application. I completely understand the concern. You know, if you have people parking in front of a residential street and they're there all day, possibly getting a ticket because it is supposed to be a two-hour and four-hour turnover. Um, but that's basically the fringe between where parking is enforced and parking is paid and it's, you know, it doesn't cost nothing. And it goes to essentially the wild, wild west where there's not many regulations and it's, you know, the end of the jurisdiction.
And you'll have to, excuse me, are, is this the last chart, by the way, before I go off on a tangent or do you have another parking chart? All right. So if, if, with Tom's permission here, um, I think you might be looking at this a little differently and I want to clarify our view on your application, at least my view. Thank you. As Mr. Scalzo points out, my view on your application. My primary concern is not what the macroscopic enforcement issues are for the village. My essentially only concern, the only concern for me, is the quality of life in this village. And whether it's lawyer speak or macroscopic issues, the fact is there's going to be, for each new additional business we have with a large amount of employees, we might see potentially a couple people, more people parking on the street. Uh, for example, we have people parking all the way up on Winter Hill Road and then walking down to the train station just to get free parking. So I think you might be underestimating the desperation of parents for free parking, which goes into my next primary question here about what analysis was done. My que, my concern is actually not the parents. Uh, it is no sense, actually. It's not the employees. It's that we might be modifying the parents' behavior as far as their commute to work. So for example, I don't know how, what percentage of parents that are going to this daycare center are Tuckahoe residents, but I suspect it's going to be fairly small. I'm suspecting most of your parents will be coming from surrounding areas. Is that correct? Is that a good assumption?
It's tough to say. It's tough to say, but it definitely is possible that people are coming from...
Let's conservatively assume sixty percent of the population is from outside Tuckahoe. It's a small village. I don't think you're going to have, would that be accurate? What's a conservative? Let's say fifty percent, seventy people.
I have something.
Give me something conservative you're okay with. We have a hundred and forty families, maximum.
So what we looked at was, we, we've studied, um, five different operating daycare centers in much more suburban areas. And we wanted to provide a comparison per, per Mr. Jockmart's, uh, direction about what is the difference between the areas that we studied in Tuckahoe?
Well, I, I don't really want to go down there. Just very roughly, what percentage of people will be coming into this village that are from outside Tuckahoe to use your facility?
That is a question I very...
All right. So I'm going to make my own assumption, which is conservatively fifty percent at least. I think it's going to be much higher, but let's, my assumption is fifty percent of a hundred and forty families are going to be from outside Tuckahoe. That's going to be seventy families. A good many of these people, I think it is safe to assume, are also part of the commuter suburban culture here in New York City, in New York, greater New York area and the supporting suburbs of New York City. I think a very large percentage of those seventy people that I've already assumed are going to be commuting to New York City for work. That would also be a decent assumption. I very much don't see those people driving from, let's say, Yonkers, for example, or somewhere else, coming, dropping off their child and then getting back in their car, driving back to their house in Yonkers and taking their train. I foresee them driving to your center, dropping off their child, finding, all day parking somewhere in the neighborhood, whether it's at a twelve-hour meter in front of someone's house. And then they're going to get on the train here in Tuckahoe and then take the train down to work. Would that also be a safe assumption? I'm asking our village planner.
Very difficult to answer that. Um, we don't have any statistics either way, you know, that would support that or that would deny it. All I know, what I heard is Andrews has a long waiting list. Uh, it would be interesting to see if that waiting list is a list of Tuckahoe residents or not.
Well, I want to clarify that Andrews is a very different sort of daycare center than what we're talking about here. Then, uh, the learning, excuse me, what is that? TLE is a, uh, very, you know, it's a private daycare center with, I would assume to say is safe as high, higher fees. Andrews, I believe, and the village can correct me, is a subsidized daycare center. Is that inaccurate? It's a non-for-profit center. So they are two very different entities. One is providing non-for-profit daycare services for what might be primarily local residents. The other is providing higher-end daycare service. So we're talking about two very different set. The people using their service, I would imply, might be people with higher-paying jobs or, um, jobs where they can afford the TLE fees. Leading me to assume that a certain percentage of them will be commuting. So let's say conservatively, just of that fifty percent, those seventy parents coming in, let's say fifty percent of those, so we're down to thirty-five parents are going to be working in New York City. Those parents are going to park around here, take up spots from our commuters, take up spots in front of people's homes. So it's not the five people. I think there's going to be a lot more people that are going to be parking here and then using the MTA service from the Tuckahoe. Because how much more convenient is that? You drop off your kid at daycare, park your car half a mile away in front of someone's house, walk to the train, boom, you're at work. And you come back home at night, go get your car, get your kid and you're on your way. And now we have thirty-five people using parking in the village.
That may happen. I, it's very difficult to say to what degree it will happen.
I understand that, but that's...
The only other comment I have to say, you know, the, the problems that we're talking about, like the overflow into residential neighborhoods is a problem that we see in a lot of communities. I, I could give you a long list of communities, you know, Mamea Neck, Larchmont, where the same thing is happening. And, you know, and, and then, you know, there could be parents that do what you mentioned. But I think it's to some degree under the village's control to figure out how to manage the parking so that you don't necessarily attract people from outside. You could, for instance, uh, you have certain parking lots that are owned by the village, uh, where you have two-hour parking in the parking lot. I think, my view, if I were to reorganize the parking system, I would make all of those permit spaces and then you can sell the permits just to the village residents. So there's certain control you can have and there's certain enforcement that the village needs to do to control these problems. Like the problem of parking in residential street, a lot of communities have it around the train stations. You know, it's, it's a human behavior that we see in many communities. And I think to some degree, uh, the village has to control it, has to enforce it and has to, uh, institute regulations that make it difficult for a real commuter to park on a residential street. Um, you know, commute, it's difficult to get residential parking permits. That would be the ideal response, you know, and some communities try to get that.
I understand what you're saying, but the point is you're trying to almost say that we should recreate the entire enforcement and parking structure here in Tuckahoe. I very much think that's unlikely. The village is going to get together and do that in the time that this is approved. So we're talking, all I'm saying is we are adding to an already...
Nightmare.
Nightmarish issue on Main Street. As I said, people are parking a mile up the road in front of houses in my neighborhood just to walk to the train. So I can't imagine what it's going to be like around here if you have, just again, conservatively twenty, thirty parents also looking for commuter parking in the area.
Yeah, I think it's, it's an excellent question.
It's just a point I wanted to raise. If we haven't looked at it, I'm surprised we haven't looked at the impact of that.
Well, we, yeah. It's very difficult to come up with an answer because we don't know who will be the parents that will go to this, that will use the childcare center. Uh, I don't know.
I understand. I'm just surprised that that hasn't even, even been noted in the parking analysis.
I don't know if there was a market research. I know that, you know, they, they have, uh, childcare centers in Westchester County. It would be nice to see a map, uh, where there are other TLE centers in Westchester.
As, as the gentleman noted though earlier, is that our community is unique to the other suburban centers they've looked at. The communities that, I believe, and I may have been misinterpreting his comment, he implied that most, almost all the other suburban locations they looked at were car-only. And we have a very specific issue here where we are a prime commuter spot with a very convenient train that these parents are going to be, I think... that these parents are going to be, I think, are, a lot of them are going to use that. I would, if I lived in another neighborhood, how convenient is that? It's great.
And that's the reason why we have two-hour and four-hour residential parking in the areas, okay? Because of the commuter situation, okay? It used to be a nightmare with all the commuters parking in the residential neighborhoods, blocking driveways. People couldn't get out of their houses and everything else like that. That's why that was instituted, okay?
And, and maybe you should have more of those, uh, and maybe some of those.
Or they got, or neighborhood has to do is apply to the police department or to the village.
Control that.
Yes.
Has this been raised though to the, to the planning board? I know they're taking a little bit of a lead on this parking issue. Has the planning board questioned where these commuters are going to park?
Planning board spent a lot of time talking about the parking impacts. The, the particular point that you raised has not been raised by the planning board, meaning that there may be outside people, let's say from Bronxville that could drive here or from another community and then take the train out of here.
I want to point out that my very conservative, I think very conservative number still ends up with thirty-five compared to fifteen employees that they anticipated parking. It's double the number of employee parking. And that's again, my rough number that has nothing, there's no legal backup to that. That is just something I'm coming up with in my own head, but is very potentially, in my mind, potentially likely, we could have thirty commuters looking for spots. Twenty, fifteen, whatever it's.
So I guess one thing we'd like to know is how full are the Tuckahoe, uh, commuter spots, meaning the, the, the lots that are out there? And if we are attracting, uh, because of your daycare center, if we are attracting more people to park in Tuckahoe, do we have the room for them, um, if it's an additional, you know, ten, fifteen people on top of the employees that you're already talking about and so.
I don't know the specific answer, uh, but what I heard is that they are, uh, on, on the parking lot that's on the other side of a rail track. There, there are five spaces that are available, five permits that could be sold. So I don't think there's significant, uh, parking reserves in your commuter lots for outsiders. But there could be outsiders parking in the twelve-hour lots. There could be outsiders who come and park in residential streets. Uh, you know, that is difficult to figure out. Um, you know, and I.
It's probably greater than, it's probably.
Whether it's thirty cars or.
I, I didn't mean to throw a giant monkey wrench. I just, I feel it's something that needs to be addressed either by yourself or, or by the applicant.
With regard to the per- permits, there's only five available spots in the village.
Not, not the permits.
Waiting list. There's a waiting list for the merchants. Um, but I don't know, I think you're talking about the, the metered parking, right?
No, I'm simply talking about the number of commuter residents that we might now have commuting, essentially we're changing commuting behavior from their neighborhoods where they live to the neighborhood where their child goes to school.
Parking can support.
And whether our parking can support that. Cause it sounds to me like that has not been addressed or even thought of, quite frankly. And I think that's a very large element of this parking issue.
And mind you, we also have two, two train stations. So, so if someone could park by assumption and either go Tuckahoe or you could go, you could walk down to Crestwood. And you got two right, right there, right in the middle.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that that reflects negatively on your application. However, I do want to feel that it has been looked at. Do you understand what I'm saying? Eyes wide open is very different than, hey, we hope it works out.
I think it would be good to see what TLE has in terms of the other sites in the area and, uh, you know, where their uh, pay customers come from. Um, I think if we could get this information for TAE, TLE in Westchester and, um, I don't know where they are. I know they, they have been looking at other sites.
And it feels like you could use general percentages within the community of who commutes.
See from how far they come to do that.
Yes.
But again, I, I, I think it is to some degree, the problem you have is a problem that needs to be enforced locally, uh, independently of the, whether it's this business or other businesses that come into your downtown.
Point, very well taken, but that's not within our purview. Our purview is, uh, whether we feel the planning board's uh, decision on the number of parking spaces is sufficient. And that for me relates directly to whether or not I feel this commuter question has at least been touched on, not necessarily answered, but at least touched on. Anyway, that was it for my diatribe. Excuse me for my rather gigantic, uh, diversion there, but I just felt it was a question that had to be asked. So I apologize.
You know, one of the things I think people fail to realize with Tuckahoe, we're a very small village, less than one square mile. But we're very unique. We have two metro and train stations, which creates problems, okay? All right. We're a major hub to get from Post Road across to Central Avenue. That's why Main Street, which is a very narrow street, has so much truck traffic and I'm talking trailers and everything else, okay? Because it's the only means of, uh, what do you call it, transportation, okay? For, for commercial traffic to get from Post Road to Central Avenue. This creates all, all these problems that we have, which are unique to Tuckahoe, not to every other Westchester community. Of course, other Westchester communities are more suburban than we are.
I grew up in Yonkers, so I know Tuckahoe and it does have a unique. Grew up in northeast Yonkers, so it does have a unique dynamic, although appearing in all the communities, I hear this in every village I appear in in Westchester County, not every village, the majority of them. Certainly any of them that have railroad stations, which are a number of them. So you are unique in some ways, but the issues that are coming up are not unique. And it, it comes down to, from my perspective is, do we have enough parking to meet what we are generating?
Yep.
And I think we're getting off into speculation. I think the studies you have and the empirical evidence you've gotten from our consultant and your consultant show that it works as to issues of.
I would agree with you, however, again, our point of perspective is not yours. We are more concerned about quality of life and not how many parking, you know, specifically how many parking spots.
Well, I, I think you, I, I think Nate then brought up a good point that you may have failed to consider is what if it's not just, you know, generating by your staff and parents dropping off, what if you're actually sucking people in because of, they're going to commute out of here? And what if it's thirty parking spots total that you need instead of fifteen and, you know, can we accommodate that?
But the question becomes unless you're going to keep this vacant, if you put a restaurant here, you're not saying
No one, no.
Only people, and, and that's at night that people will be parking on residential.
But a restaurant, people don't use a commuter spot to go to New York, you know, that's what.
They park on residential streets. There's no.
Well.
But that's a separate, that's a separate, we're talking about long-term commuter. My specific question was whether long-term commuters that are using your daycare facility will shift their behavior. That has nothing to do with what you just mentioned. Now, maybe to go back to the main, we can address this further. I think our, it's been raised to our, our, our consultant. Um, but I know that Mr., I, I don't mean to keep dragging us down that path. So I know that a lot of the other members are also interested in your traffic studies, not just parking. And I'm, at the risk of more charts, uh, we might, uh, want to see those numbers.
This quickly with no charts.
Thank you.
There are no charts for traffic. I'm sorry to let everyone down. Um, so we're actually going to take them down.
Thank you.
Um, so we did a, uh, traffic impact study on the same days that we did the June, uh, extra parking counts. So we got a great understanding of how the intersection operates. It's quite unique because of the way the pedestrians work, you know, when people get off the train, um, you hit the button and no cars are going through the intersection when pedestrians are. Um, we did an analysis of the way the intersection operates today. Um, then we looked to the future because, you know, the, the project can't happen overnight. There's got to be some internal modifications. It could take some time. So we looked to the future, um, what are traffic conditions in Tuckahoe? Um, we apply an ambient growth to figure out traffic increased in the future. Uh, we also look at other projects that are approved in the area that could also affect traffic. Um, we did, uh, work with, uh, the village staff to incorporate the traffic for the, uh, the hotel project that's on Marble Dale. Um, that'll be open in the future. Not open right now. We can't count the traffic that's generated by the hotel now. Um, and then what we do is to compare the future without the project and the future with the project. We, um, estimate based on our studies of, of these locations, how much traffic this site would generate. And those are some of the numbers that I was mentioning, uh, earlier. Um, it's important to keep in mind though that, uh, the daycare use, and this is something that, uh, Mr. Jackman's touching on is that, uh, you, you could, uh, go to this facility, um, and you could slightly alter your, uh, path of travel today. So let's say you are, um, you live northeast of the property and you're parking at the train station. Uh, you have a permit space. You could be coming south on Columbus Avenue already. What you do if you had a child that was, um, a school-aged child, you could drop them off on your way down southbound, um, Columbus Avenue. You're not necessarily an extra car that's, uh, being added to the network. You're someone that would be going southbound on Columbus Avenue with or without the project. This is what's called, um, uh, diverted traffic. So you could be going north and southbound on other roadways and instead you come on Columbus Avenue, stop by the daycare center and then keep going where you were. If you look at traffic in the greater area, it's not as much of an impact as you'd think because a portion of it could already be going north and southbound on Columbus Avenue today. Um, so if you take that, you, you bake that into the cake, you look at the analysis and what it shows you, if you were to compare the operated conditions of uh, Main Street and Columbus Avenue in the future without the project and in the future with the project, um, there's not much of a perceptible impact. And we looked at that during, um, peak times in the morning when people are busiest and in the evening when there's the most amount of traffic on the roadway. You find that there's no significant impact from, as a result of the project.
Wha- what do you mean no significant impact?
So these analyses that we run are called levels of service analysis. So it's one metric to see how an intersection operates. Um, for instance, um, for instance, today, if, if you look at how the intersection operates in the morning peak hour, um, it takes a weighted average of how much time it takes you to get through the intersection, how much delay the red light causes you. Uh, if you look at it today, overall, it's a level of service D, you know, it's like a score, uh, report card, A through F. Uh, D, which is fifty-one point six seconds. In the future, with the added traffic, uh, of the hotel with ambient traffic growth and then, uh, if you, if you look at just what's called the no build condition, the future without the project, um, that'd be a D fifty-eight point two seconds. So you, you see that there's an incremental delay there. In the future with the project, that goes from an overall fifty-two point eight to fifty-three point eight. So it's one more second overall that you're waiting. You wouldn't be able to even notice that at the light. You kind of, you know, it's one second.
I'm sorry, there's a lot of numbers and it's late at night here. Um, maybe I'm not quite understanding this. Um, just going through the second paragraph of your letter here, and I assume this is kind of what you're talking about.
Which letter?
Um, I'm sorry, not your letter. Excuse me, his letter. Um, did you provide it to them or is that just to us?
What's the date of that letter?
Nine, three?
Yes, I have that.
Okay. So in the second paragraph, um, first of all, that second line, sixty-four, seventy-two total new trips in the AM peak hour. Is that second part supposed to say in the PM peak, peak hour? Seventy-three of eighty-one total new trips in the.
You're saying into the first paragraph on the first page?
Uh, the second paragraph.
Under traffic impacts.
Yes.
And then what line?
I'm, I'm actually talking to him for a second. It's sixty-four, seventy-two total new trips in the AM peak hour and seventy-three of eighty-one total new trips in the AM again, peak hour? Or is that PM? Are there two peak hours?
Right. Those are, the AM peak hour has thirty-nine vehicle trips arriving and thirty-three vehicle trips leaving. So those, that's a combination of the employee traffic. That's why we have more arriving.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh, the parent traffic. And that's in that sixty-minute, uh, interval.
So those are both AM, peak hour.
No, no, no. It, it's AM, it, it's AM and PM.
Okay, that's.
You're looking at the bullet points.
No, the next page. He's looking at the second paragraph on the next page.
Oh.
It's the second page, yeah.
And, and it's the first sentence of the second paragraph. It's kind of hard because the, uh.
Okay. So these, um, the vehicle trips in the morning peak hour, oh, and yeah, yeah, I think the.
That's all he's asking. It's PM, thank you.
I think so, yes.
Okay, and I'm just.
All of the traffic goes through this particular intersection.
And this gentleman is claiming that it's only a one-second difference, uh, without the daycare center and with the daycare center. It's a one-second difference roughly, uh, of waiting at that traffic intersection from fifty-two point eight to fifty-three point eight. Um, your study however says comparison shows the average delay increases by one second per vehicle in the AM peak hour.
Correct. I think that's the same thing he wants to say.
Okay.
When we talk about these traffic levels of service, they are related to the delay that each vehicle incurs. And he's talking about an average of all the vehicles driving through that intersection.
So, uh, one person sitting in their car will see a one-second delay. However, overall the cars, you would see multiple second delays. Each person would see a one-second delay.
An increase.
Yes.
On average, you know, that depends on which approach you arrive. Some approaches may not see an increase in delay. Others may see an increase in delay. So he's talking about an average. Some may be zero, some may be.
That's fine. I was trying to understand the difference between your, just understand how those interact. Thank you.
I mean, I'm, I'm a little skeptical of that. You know, we, we see in traffic that small increases in the number of cars can make massive differences. And so a road can be going fine, fine, fine. You add another car, you add another car, you add another car, no problem, no problem, no problem. And then a one percent increase and you got jam because of, you know, the way people move, uh, and, and the variability of all the basic cars and, and red lights. And with, you know, um, cars zipping in and out of, of spots and everything. So, um, and it seems, you know, part of the problem is that Tuckahoe and Main Street, uh, intersection is at a tipping point right now. I mean, basically during peak hour, it's at a tipping point and it's pretty miserable right now. In fact, we had a whole mayor all campaign where half the, one side was saying, you know, let's reduce traffic on Main Street. That, uh, so it's a, it's a big, it's a big issue. Uh, and my, so I guess my question is, are we at a tipping point and does a few extra cars really massively change the outcome for people?
I, yeah, you're close to the tipping point. You know, the tipping point typically I would say is a level of service E. And, and you're getting close to a level of service E. Um, and the issue here is not that there's so many cars. It looks like there are a lot of cars. There are long queues. The issue is you have a very, very inefficient traffic light. It's the combination of an exclusive pedestrian phase. The combination of all these intersections being interconnected and you, you have a pedestrian that pushes a button at one intersection and all the other intersections, you know, get the walk signal. So it's, it's a very old signal. It's very inefficient and, you know, I'm not the first one to say it. I think there have been a number of traffic engineers that have mentioned that before. I think the study that was done for the hotel, um, mentioned the same thing and they, they contributed some money to, or they, they promised some money to, to do these improvements. So that is an, an issue that we have today and, and as you know, many pedestrians they jaywalk because the wait is so long.
And I, I may be recalling improperly, but I believe when the hotel did its study, they could cut the timing of the light almost in half, I believe.
A second.
It was almost a minute and a half, uh, wait versus a three-minute wait currently. It was, but it just, they won't do it.
Yeah.
Don't know why.
I, I think, you know, that there are ways to improve the operation of that signal that, that the village should be, uh, undertaking or pushing, you know, pressuring the county to do it. It's, it's a county road. I think it's a county signal.
Okay. All right.
I have no more exhibits.
So what is a, uh, what's service level E? If service level D is fifty-three seconds, what's E and F? How bad do we get?
E is, at the threshold between D and E is fifty-five seconds. So the existing condition is just under fifty-two seconds.
Right.
And then in the future, what I meant by imperceptible is not all that much of a change from the way it operates without the project.
But it's only a few seconds when it, you know, traffic engineers believe it. It's a whole different category of worse. And how bad is F? When, what's a delay? Uh, what, do you know what that is?
F, yeah.
Where, is that six?
Happen after eighty seconds.
Okay, so there's, gotcha. And so what, what is the range for D then? Where, where does D start?
Thirty-five.
So, okay, so we are, uh, D minus, I guess is what you can say, already today.
Already, already. And it happens to be mostly attributed to the inefficiencies of the way it operates and, um, yeah, I won't go any, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Um, I, I guess just my, my last point about the study that the hotel did and the study that this did regarding to any skepticism of how the intersection analysis came out. Our results of the way the intersection functions today is the same way that the hotel came up with their analysis. We got a copy of what they did. We wanted to make sure that, we're plugging in a bunch of numbers. We want to make sure what gets spit out is the same that the hotel did and it, and it was. I just want to make sure that's on the record.
So your findings reinforce the hotel's findings, correct?
And vice versa.
Okay. I, I think
Good.
I think, the last remaining issue for the board was...
I have one more issue. If you could, put the chart back up that shows the intersection, please, of Underhill and Columbus, any one of them would help.
Maybe the...
Uh, no, there's another one, makes it a lot, the parking one, right?
Uh, yeah, perfect.
Perfect. Here is a proposal that I would like you to seriously consider. There's a crosswalk in front of your building, which presently has some hash marks or whatever. There is no flashing yellow crossing signal. The village is thinking about a crossing signal. I would like TLE to pay for that flashing crossing signal. Also, I would like to see where the hash marks are now, that that be delineated in a brighter color. And I'll leave that to the traffic experts. It could be something that they use in other villages and towns, they use stamped brick that's red, they use white, something. I personally stood in front of that building this morning in the rain for about a half an hour, along with the chief of police and another member from this board, and you watch people just going by and people tend not to even see the sign that says stop.
And I was there with them for five minutes and was almost hit by two cars.
Yeah. It's very unsafe. I mentioned to the chief of police possibly a traffic light, he didn't think it was a good idea. So the flashing light, I think, would suffice. Also, if you would then pay for the cross hash marks on that Columbus Avenue as well as Underhill, your tenant, your client, sorry.
So just to make some understanding.
Yep, that one's...
Restriped across walk here, restriped across walk here.
Right, and the flashing light on Columbus, not on Underhill.
Flashing light, you mean like the, it's the diamond that says...
Yes, people are crossing.
Right, links, right.
Because I think, one of the other members raised in the work session, I think, despite all our questions on parking and, you know, we understand the planning group is doing this as well and we are ready for the recommendation, we will look at what they recommend. My primary concern is actually the safety of your parents and their children, obviously. As we just mentioned, it's a crazy, people just blow right through that, they do not care if you've got a kid. I've stood there with a kid and had people blow bias. And, you know, painting the entire crosswalk a different color, red for example, and then putting the crosshatches on top of that, anything you can do to make it more visible that this is a crosswalk, parents are crossing, babies are here, you know, I think anything that would help. We have our concerns about the safety of the children attending.
Yeah, I'll leave that to the traffic experts. I don't know if red, white, pink, polka dots, what's the right color, but something to delineate it. Also, I would like you to consider, seriously consider, having one of your staff members outside in the peak hour when there's drop off and pick up.
And very particularly, very particularly during snow or very inclement weather, because I think parents would be very tempted at that point. They've got a little six-month-old in the car, they do not want to walk fifty feet in the middle of the pouring rain. And I almost think that, you know, specifically on those days, I think someone's going to be necessary to be outside and, you know, you can't double park, you cannot jaywalk right across the street carrying an infant carrier, things of that nature.
I think it would be self-serving also. It would deter people from stopping in those spots to run into the deli or whatever for that peak hours. I mean, they, they still could, but... They're public, yes, yes, but...
And their parents would probably feel assured that someone is out there, watching out for them.
Essentially the role of a crossing guard, but also what, I'm going to call them a shepherd that makes sure that people can get, take care of you, you know?
And we don't necessarily mean, I think that chief of police shot down a crossing guard, but more just someone standing outside, keeping an eye on everyone, making sure that everyone's okay.
So it could be an extension of how the daycare enforces parents dropping off. They could be parking illegally, they could be...
We leave that to you, but yes, it's our recommendation that, have, look into that role at least.
We hear you, we'll take the recommendation back to our client.
Thank you.
That's a recommendation. The other two, as far as the hash marks and the flashing light are more mandatory.
And I hope they understand that our concern is not for the village, is for your clients.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest in terms of pedestrian crossing, the zebra striping, the high-visibility crossings. Those are much more visible than the crossings that you have today.
You mean the diagonal sort of...
Like the zebra striping.
Yeah.
And the other one in terms of flashing light, I would suggest what's called the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. As opposed to a light that just flashes all day long like this, the flashing beacon, they're very, very bright and they come on when the pedestrian crosses.
Is this the same one we have here on Main Street across from the park?
I don't know that.
Down the, that is the same one?
One up by the Crestwood train station, but you have to hit a button to...
They come on when the pedestrian crosses. When there's no pedestrian, they're not on. They only come on when somebody's crossing.
And for your benefit, one of the reasons Mr. Ringwald is saying that is that the police chief told both of us that they've seen, they see a massive increase in the times that people stop with those flashing lights versus when there is not, whether there's a kid or anyone in the crosswalk.
Yeah, they are very effective.
Is that when you press the button?
Well, that's why I want clarification. So that's automatic, the one you're talking about? You don't have to press a button?
They can have both.
Okay.
Pressing a button or automatic, they have detectors and it depends on the design, it can be either one of them.
Good, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, like me. Is that it, as far as your presentations?
Unless the board has any questions, thank you for your patience.
I think we, thank you for your patience.
We won't send any charts before the next meeting, but we'll see you presumably next month and get you the information you asked about either at or in advance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience and informer.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding twenty-one Columbus Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public who would like to speak regarding twenty-one Columbus Avenue, please step forward.
Anthony Lauris, my name. I'm speaking on behalf of one of the fire commissioners. Has anybody ever realized we have a firehouse right here?
Yes.
I also drive the trolley. Last Friday, I started at nine o'clock in front of the library, it's coming down Columbus Avenue. The Alcove over here where they dropped the students off to come to school, people were dropping their children off. Behind the buses, there was a truck making his deliveries for the stores in the station mall. Cars were coming down Underhill Street, people were trying to get up Underhill Street. I was backed up to Mr. Kaya's paint store. I waited two and a half minutes to get up to the post office. Do you know what kind of traffic and impact we're going to have if that place opens up? How are my fire trucks going to get down here if you have an alarm?
I want to clarify, is this official statement from the fire department?
No, it's from me, it's from me, and I'm asking that. I'm not here on behalf of, I'm not here on behalf of the fire board, I'm just telling you what my title is and I'm concerned. God forbid if we have an alarm, come on, while people are dropping their children off to this school, people are trying to drop their children off to this new nursery school and a fire truck can't get through, what happens?
No, I appreciate it, Mr. Lauris, I was just...
What happens to the delay where the fire or the emergency? How many times do we go over to the, to the assistant living? The fire truck and the ambulance goes over there, comes down Main Street, goes over there at least four or five times during the week. Sometimes twice a day, sometimes three times a day.
Can I ask Gary a question real quick for you?
Sure.
The chief Castanza and the fire chief are both going to approve the plan, right? Are they going to give their comments on it?
Well, yeah, you could refer, we'll send them the plans. I know the chief has the plans already, I don't know if it's sent to the fire department, but that, that's...
Because they're going to express, they're going to say if they feel like there's, this is going to cause an issue for their trucks.
My own personal opinion, I think it's going to cause a problem.
No, I appreciate that.
Because if there's a fire down Crestwood, I don't think the fire truck is going to go down Cameron and go down Main Street and go down through Marblehead Road or go down Main Street and try to come down Columbus Avenue to go to Crestwood. We're going to have a big problem.
I just want to be clear, your concern is with Underhill, correct?
Underhill and Columbus Avenue.
So the problem exists today has nothing to do with the TLE?
What, why doesn't it? Did you have a...
You just sat through the problem today and TLE's not open.
No, I'm just saying if it opens up, if that school opens up and you have some students coming there at eight o'clock, some students coming to the village hall at the same time, do you know what kind of traffic you're going to have?
But you heard the earlier presentation, there'll be a number of spots in front of the building and there'll be three or four spots across the street for a drop off and pickup.
I understand that, but right now you've got five or six parking space right on Underhill Street and that's what I'm telling you. The last week, last Friday, when I seen a truck parked on the side of the village hall side, trying to make his delivery and there's people dropping their children off, cars are parked and people are letting their children off on the opposite side of the street too and one parent is crossing them over. You've got cars stopping, stopped on both sides, up and down the street, that's what I'm saying. And if the alarm, if that bell rings and those guys have to get out, what are they going to do? Because down in the corner, there's a jam up too. The people are waiting for the light, trying to get across. They're going to have a problem here, Tom, you really will. I mean it, and it's going to be a serious problem. It's going to be a ser, maybe I'm too close?
It's not your fault, it just, I'm right by the speaker, that's all.
No, no, I hear you, I hear you. My point, I don't disagree with you, but the problem exists already. I believe it's an issue that needs to be addressed by the police.
Yes, but it's going to increase if that place opens up and you know that.
It can, yes.
It's going to increase greatly. You have people going to the post office, you have people going to the station mall, you have people going to Mr. Kaya's place. All right, they could go in the parking lot, but they still get caught in the traffic before they reach his parking lot.
Well, Mr. Lauris, for myself, what I can tell you is that I will take, that's why I asked Gary, is my plan was waiting to see and I take the police chief's report and the fire chief's report very seriously about any concerns they might have.
I, my personal opinion, I don't think we need another nursery school in here, believe me. And how much, how much room do they have to play in that, in that driveway? Don't forget, you got, you got the old loading dock in the back over there when it was the post office.
I've seen the facilities that TLE has and they're beautiful places, Mike, so.
Well, I think it's going to be a disaster, my personal opinion.
We hear you.
Okay? And as far as commuters come by, you're not going to stop then because when a person, whether it's a man or a lady driving a car, it's get out of my way, I got to get there. And no matter where they're going, it's not going to run away.
We got you, but I assume you also heard us, we ask a lot of, I mean, we're taking it seriously.
I sure hope you guys consider this very deeply.
We are.
Study it, study it. Well, you know, presentations are always beautiful, you know that, Tom. Presentations are the most beautiful thing on paper, but when it comes down to reality and that, and that place moves in there, we don't need to, I mean, I'm not against children because I drive a school bus during the day. We don't, I don't want to see no children running on that sidewalk, God forbid, running off. There's plenty of traffic there. And you know, a parent could hold the child's hand just one second, they drop something, pick it up, you, God forbid, a kid runs in the street with plenty of traffic. I don't want to see nothing happen to anybody.
That was, yeah, that's why we're so concerned about that crossing. We agree with you.
You know, it's not a big schoolyard where the kid runs around, you know, you're on sidewalk and in Main Street.
Well, I should be, are you under the impression that they play outside?
No, 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 I'm just saying when the parent picks them up.
When they're dropping them off, yeah.
When they're picking them up and dropping them off, it's, you know, when they're over here, the parent drops them off, they go right into the steps here, they're not going to be running on a main thoroughfare there, but consider that, you've got a firehouse here, please consider that.
We hear you.
Good, thank you. Anybody else from the public? Sorry, she came up first, sorry. We'll get to you.
Good evening, my name is Corinne Laurie Mabon, I am vice president, chief program officer for Andrews. I just wanted to go on record that I'm requesting, which I believe that's what it sounds like it's going to happen, that the public hearing tonight remains open.
Yes.
We have retained an attorney who will be attending the planning board meeting next week to present on our behalf and will be bringing information and data just about our experience and what we're finding with the families parking in this area.
Thank you, yes, we received your letters and, yes, we will comply. Thank you.
You're good now. You're clear.
Yes, Mike, my name is Rocco Alessandro, I own Station Wall and I witness every day the parking issue with the school bus dropping off the kids at Andrews daycare center. You've got to understand, besides the school bus, there's also delivery trucks. They're parking the street on the, Underhill Road here. There's only one way, there's a two-way traffic coming down and going up. When there's trucks parked there or school buses, people can get through. That's one issue. The other issues, you have a hundred and fifty kids being dropped off, if I understand Have you ever tried to park the car backing up into a space when there's two-way traffic? You're going to stop traffic.
Agreed. And this is why one of the proposals is to open up three spots and four spots on both sides of the street to make it easier so they don't have to make U-turns, they don't have to back up, they can pull in, drop off and keep going. That is part of the proposal.
So they aren't doing, we want, don't want them doing U-turns and trying to get it right in front of the daycare, so.
But it's only going to be, it's, it's normal, people trying to park, they're going to back up into the parking space.
True.
It's going to happen. So now you have a hundred and fifty kids being dropped off. The gentleman here says, mentions the hotel, what does the hotel have to do with this over here? I don't understand.
Well, we were just talking about, so we already are getting an increase in traffic from the hotel. It's not that the hotel and the daycare are related, it's that we're already going to see an increase of traffic from the hotel and we wanted to understand how much more traffic is he adding? And he was saying that they're just using the same data to do their analysis that the hotel was doing, that's all, they're not, they're not linking the two businesses.
The, the traffic light over here, I don't know if you ever stopped by the car veil waiting for the light?
I'm stuck there every morning, it's, it's...
It's more than one, more than fifty seconds.
Three minutes some days, three. It's backed up to, you know, Orange Theory in the park over there some days.
So I, I don't know how this is going to happen, but I think it's an issue with the fire department, that's the street, people making a delivery.
I would say, and I'm not a, I'm not a parking expert, but the one thing I would say the big difference is that the parents are not dropping off their child on Underhill, right? The business they're dropping off on. Now, I understand there's other issues with that, but they don't ever have to go up Underhill. They probably won't want to because that will kind of interrupt their commute where they'll have to go up Underhill, come back down Underhill or make a big loop. I'm guessing they're going to much prefer to just stay on Columbus with that kind of easy traffic pattern.
You always want to go on Underhill to skip the Main Street light.
Well, that's only if you know the, if you're coming from the other side, but yeah. I'm hoping the parents are just going to be using Columbus, I'm not a traffic expert, but...
I think the problem is the light.
Yeah, that's me too.
No, we appreciate your input.
We hear you.
I think it's a hundred and fifty kids being dropped off in that particular spot is not going to be too good and it's going to, it's going to upset the business still. During the day, there is no business here. You take any parking space away from the, the commercial spaces.
Yeah.
Banks are closing, there's, there's not going to be no more banking. A lot of businesses are closing, so I think there should be more consideration towards the business.
I agree.
You've got to admit, swirl and joy will be happy though.
You know, swirl and joy, this, oh yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we're making a good or bad point, but there's also, there's also a hundred and fifty parents coming in that might stay for an hour and a half dinner or, you know, it might help our businesses, is another positive way to look at it, but yes.
These are commuters, people come, they leave in the morning and they come back at night. They don't drop no business, I'm sorry to say.
That's, that's too bad. That's too bad.
They do not stop for business, they don't stop for dinners. These are people that are coming in at nighttime for dinner.
I think with the daycare, though, there will be a variety of people. You know, you'll have people-- many people will have their kids in daycare for four hours or something, so, you know, they might drop them off from seven to 11 a.m., and then might just walk over for lunch at one of your places, or, you know. So I think there is some positives to the downtown, to have some vibrancy and to have additional people coming in. The question is whether it's too much, and there's many concerns that it's-- it may be too much, but it's not all negative, that's for sure.
It's gonna be a traffic issue, that's what I think. From just looking at what's going on there now, and it's not very-- not that busy. It's just the delivery, the trucks are parking to make deliveries, they have to someplace.
We hear you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, it's a great presentation, and--
What's your name, please?
Let me think about it. Al Cowherd took a whole painting glass. I'm also the individual that manages that parking lot on Lake Avenue that you mentioned earlier. So I know something about the parking, and I know something about the traffic there. In the mornings, we have a lot of contractors coming. Probably forty, fifty percent of our business or traffic is at that time. So between seven and maybe ten, there's a lot of traffic, including forty-foot trucks moving in there with paint, lots-- a lot of other trucks that are smaller, but we have forty-foot trailers moving in. Benjamin Moore in particular is there. So that's a great deal of traffic. You know, of course, as they mentioned about the traffic on Underhill Street, there is a lot. I'm concerned, actually, with the kids and the traffic, and the parents. Just today, just, you know, stupid stuff that parents do. A lady said, I guess it was in New York or someplace in New York City, she lost a four-year-old kid, right? I don't know if you heard that on radio, she lost a four-year-old child. Had the cops, everyone all looking for this four-year-old child, and what happened was she forgot she dropped it off at the daycare center. That's nothing new. There was a-- what about the gentleman-- gentleman, the person-- his twins got killed because he forgot his kids in the car. The point I'm making is that the parents today, and everyone-- everything is in a rush, everybody's running all over the place. They forget, they have things on their mind, and things do happen. I mean, there was-- I think we saw years back where a father left a kid on-- you know, a small child, a baby on top of the car and took off with the kid. The kid didn't die, they came off all right, but it happens. Everyone has problems, everyone has concerns, and hurry-- and this is a large traffic area for Tuckahoe. Also, having said that, I'll get into another topic to a degree, just to lend this to you. That area right now in Columbus Avenue is probably undeveloped. And there are guys kicking-- people kicking tires to put up apartments, okay? And if there are apartments gonna go in Tuckahoe, that's the area to go, because it's not gonna bother anybody. It's apartments, you set it up, you're not gonna-- people are not gonna be calling up, you're hurting my view or whatever, because, and there's a wide street, et cetera. So it happens to be a great place for development, in my view, all right? Now, when you start with developing, this is great, there'll be more kids, but what is this gonna do? Well, the reason I bring this up is that particular piece of property could very well be a piece of that development. And it probably won't be too long. I might not be around, but it won't be too long, maybe a year or so. This is gonna be happening, and this is things to think about. So we have to think about the planning about Village of Tuckahoe in the near future. What we can expect, and what is the new plan?
Have you brought that up to the planning board as well? Have you talked to the planning board?
Excuse me?
Sorry, have you talked to the planning board, sir, as well? Have you brought this up--
No, I haven't talked-- this is the first board I-- I don't like-- I don't even like to go out in public, because right now I'm being asleep.
But that specific topic, I think, would be something they'd like to hear, that, you know--
Yes, I will be bringing it up.
We kind of decide on the technicalities sometimes.
I will, you know, I will be bringing it up. It's the first time I brought it up in public, honestly. So I'm bringing it up now, unless you guys are thinking about what's happening in the future. It's going to happen.
Yeah.
What I do with someone else, though, it's gonna happen, this I can guarantee. I might, you know, again, I say that. And again, I am concerned about these kids and people dropping-- it's nobody-- nobody wants to leave a kid, you know, and forget about a child or whatever it is, but they're in a hurry, they got-- especially women. I thank God every day that I wasn't born a woman, because they got so many things on their mind. They gotta worry about the kid, the laundry, to get the kid, get him to school, and then take the baloney they have to take from the husbands. I mean, that's-- that's crap. You're the only person there, right? It's true, right? You agree with me? It's crazy. So now they got the kid, they're gonna drop him off, set him up. There's no parking space, even though you made a lot-- but maybe five people, there's only three parking spaces. They're waiting there. I got a forty-foot truck that wants to get in, in the paint store to drop off their paint. I got these contractors that are running around, and--
Do you have to-- specifically to your truck, sir? Do you have to move people from their parking spots? Or are they able to get in as long as people are parked in the spots properly? Or do you-- To get the forty-foot truck in, do they stay on the street, or do they come into your--
Sometimes you have to move. In our parking lot, yes, sometimes we have to move.
But let's say all the cars are parked on the street in the proper places--
We have no trouble with the cars on--
Oh, okay, as long as they're parked properly, okay.
The problem is you got this truck making a turn. He's coming in, he's gotta make a turn, turn back out, move back, and he's not the only guy. There's three or four other companies that are coming at that time.
Okay. But the parked cars aren't usually in your way when that's happening? The parked cars on the street aren't usually in your way when that's happening?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah? Okay.
And they have to wait, you back up traffic.
Okay.
And the person has to make the train, that's another problem. They're gonna kick the train, drop off the kid. You know, and there's no reason-- I was thinking about that. If I was a parent dropping off a child on Columbus Avenue-- I know there's fourteen-hour parking on Columbus Avenue on this side-- why don't I just park the car, pay for the park, take the kid, go across the street, drop him off, get on a train, and go?
My specific concern--
Another fourteen hours, and that's it, it's done. But you can't guarantee that those spaces are gonna be there for the child center. You can't guarantee that. The other commuters are gonna find it. People are gonna find out that they're available and they're gone.
Yep.
Anyway, thank you for your--
Just clarification of-- Al, the clarification on development? Why did you bring up the development, say, of your property turning into an apartment building?
Yes, say that, clarification?
Yeah, why did you bring that up?
Because that's-- people are kicking tires.
He's saying essentially the Epstein's--
You wanna do this, you wanna do that.
He's saying Epstein's could be a better use as a part of a development.
That would make it a-- you know, that's just--
Oh, all right. I missed that part, all right.
Is that accurate, sir? You were saying--
If I was younger, I would buy it. I'm not young, you know, my kids are not part of that, but that's the way it goes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we understood you well, that you feel a better use for that facility would be for apartments.
No question about it, and I have to tell you this. If Milton Epstein was alive, he'd probably be saying up there, wherever the hell he is-- I can say hell, because his language is very-- if you ever knew Milton, his language is really up there. Anyway-- he would say, "Coward, gonna kick your rear end." And he wouldn't say rear end, okay? But it's true, and I told Mark the same way, that's how I feel. I feel it's not--
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your experience, sir.
Certainly.
Business zoning district does not permit apartments. The master plan did not recommend a recommendation to include apartments. So as you pointed out, it's not for your board, it's not for the planning board. If Mr. Cowherd thinks the area should have apartments, the village board is the only one that can do anything about it.
Correct.
We hear you.
Anybody else?
Uh-oh. It's trouble.
I know, I'm here for something else completely, but one question--
Your name, sir?
Leonard Brandis, Brandis Architects. I'll be back in a few minutes, hopefully. The comment that I have is that, listening about the trolley and the tire range, things like that, one issue that I have personally is the dating of their traffic study, which is after school is closed, June 25th and 26th. I think it really should be done, a traffic study, when the schools are open, when the school buses are going through, and everything else. So I really feel that that is a flaw in that study.
Wouldn't the daycare center still be running during the summer, though?
Not-- but the school-- yeah, but they'll be running-- not-- it's minimal.
It's minimal, right.
Main traffic is during the, you know, September through June.
It's traffic from people taking their children to schools and other places.
School M plus--
Right, I'm just saying that specific spot is on--
Which are not being included in this traffic study.
Well--
That should be part of your study.
Okay.
People, there's higher traffic.
Yeah, yeah.
It's Route Tuckahoe.
No, I get the general point, I'm just-- I meant specifically on Underhill there.
They were specifically rushed before the end of the school year.
Oh, okay.
That's my understanding also, that planning board did bring up that issue, and I believe--
It was done before school ended.
June 23rd and 26th, schools are closed. There was one in May, they mentioned, but, you know.
School did go crazy late this year, but anyway.
Any other comments from the public?
Yeah, anybody else in the public? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to leave the public hearing open. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks. We'll see you next time, thank you. Thank you. Last but not least--
Don't forget your easel.
We'll take it.
Okay, 46 Lincoln Avenue, area variance for an addition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks, George.
And Leonard, if you were here fifteen minutes earlier, we would've let you go beforehand. I mean, you know, I'm just telling you.
Just as long as your client knows whose fault it is that he's up--
Actually, I do blame the village for this, because it is the holiest day of the Jewish New Year.
Oh.
And I actually had to fast for 25 hours, grab a quick bite, and run down here. So I do not blame myself on that.
All right.
Not be holding the board, me.
And planning board meeting last time was Russia's shutout.
Wow.
We're picking on you.
Yes, I apologize.
Is the fasting done now, at least?
It is done. End minute, 7:07.
Nice.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Evening.
We are seeking area variances for setbacks on an existing building that did not-- that was built way before the zoning codes existed and building codes. The existing building itself, in the front of the building, only has two-foot-ten front yard and two-inch side yard over here. The area that we're looking at expanding in this house is over an existing addition on the house that was done many years ago, which is held with two posts. We're gonna be replacing those posts, but I want to keep them as posts so that I can still maintain a clear driveway. I don't want to put concrete pairs there, because it's already tight the way it is.
I don't know if your client told you-- that was one of our specific questions in the work session--
That is why--
--was how you're-- okay. And so how are you doing that specifically? Because right now it just looks like--
It does exist.
It just looks like six-by-six posts right now.
Those are, actually, I believe those are four-by-four posts right now.
Oh, wow.
We are replacing those. I'm going to be using four-by-four steel lolly columns--
Oh, awesome, okay.
--and wrapping those, so that is gonna be structurally sound. But we do have all the stonework here, and we want to match that for the other part of the house where we're enclosing for a screen-in porch on the first-- a screen-in area on the patio.
And I'm assuming you're putting in all footers and everything to carry all that away?
Carrying the whole load and redoing-- all this is getting restructured as well. I think that's the safest way to work with this. So the house itself, as you can see, already exists very close to the roadway. There's not-- no changes there.